And. The Senate. The Senate. No. I have to. But. It is. Like. Uh-huh. He's. Two days.
All right. We're at seven o'clock. Sounds like the audio is good. I will call them, order the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you can remove your hats and stand. Mr. Abel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have no announcements, but it's going to say if the manager wanted to take the roll call and cover any housekeeping.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the December 3rd Board of Supervisors regular meeting. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the vice chair calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. And if a member of the public is acknowledged by the vice chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Chair, you have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Had no proclamations this evening, so next up, public input for any items that are not on the agenda. We welcome the public to address the board. We'll start in the room. If you want to walk up to the podium, state your name and your neighborhood of residence. Seeing none, call for anyone online. You may use your raise hand feature located at the bottom of the screen or unmute. Seeing none. Next up will be the approval of the minutes from the November 19th, 2024 meeting. Do we have any corrections?
Well, they weren't published. They were just published late, so they weren't there. Can we just approve them in our next meeting?
I move the table. Approve of the minutes.
All right. Do we need a second for that? I don't think so. So.
I can second.
All right.
I second.
Okay.
Right? So all in favor of table into the next meeting, say aye. 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 Any opposed, say no. We'll get that taken on for the next agenda. Next up, we have Authorities, Boards, and Commissions reports. We'll start with the Parks and Recreation Authority report. Let's see, Mr. Corey Gracie Griffin in attendance this evening. So we'll move on then to the Center Area Transportation Authority report. We did get word Mr. Rob DeMaio was unable to attend this evening, so their report is attached to the agenda, and if any board members have any questions or comments, they can forward those to the manager, Mr. DeMaio. Next up, Special Reports and Acknowledgements. We have our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusionary Activities acknowledgements. World AIDS Day was on December 1st. Hanukkah will begin on December 25th and run through January 2nd. Christmas will be on December 25th, and Kewanza will run from December 22nd to January 1st. Next, the Center Region Municipal Planning Organization providing an update on the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan. This evening, we have Ms. Ann Messner in attendance if she wants to come up and provide us with a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Messner. I'm from the Center County MPO, and I'm here just to provide an update on our next big activity, which is the Long Range Transportation Plan. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of background for those that aren't familiar with the MPO. We are extremely busy almost all the time, and we have a couple roles that we play for Center County as a whole. We're a single-county MPO, and some of our priorities are to stay up to date with the current legislation. That can be both state as well as federal because sometimes we're impacted in our operations by both, and we like to try to do that information dissemination through our Technical and Coordinated Committee meetings as well as meeting summaries that we distribute to mailing lists. We prepare eight plans. Usually they're spread out between five to eight years. This year, though, we will be looking at all eight in some form. They're all hitting in terms of updates, so we're extremely busy. The main one, like I said before, is here for the Long Range Transportation Plan, and that has a due date of next fall. But we also have other items. We are partners with federal and state funding sources, and therefore we have to keep track of what road, bridge improvement projects are in terms of design and construction. And there are three documents that we also monitor. One is the Transportation Improvement Program. That's a four-year funding exercise where we look at projects from design basically to construction and try to complete them in those four years. Sometimes funding has to get rearranged because of cost overruns in the first two years, so projects get pushed, but they, for the most part, as far as I know, haven't been dropped. They just take a little longer to get done. The 12-year program is a little bit of a planning exercise in that we think we're going to get money from years five to 12, but it's not a guarantee. So as the financial guidance comes in, we are able to try to anticipate, and so when the time comes, we can try to get those projects also funded. And then the Unified Work Program is staff's, essentially their timesheet. It's our task list that we have committed to. They're generally updated every two years, and the MPO actually just approved our task list for the next two years. And like I said before, we worry about roads, bridges, as well as transit and active transportation. Next slide. So the Long Range Transportation Plan is an all-encompassing document that is to include all modes of transportation. It has to have goals and objectives. They are regularly reviewed with each update to see if the county is desiring something different, and that will be part of this update. It also evaluates how the system is working. So right now, our system performance measures are pavement condition, bridge condition, and safety, and safety being generally crashes, trying to reduce crashes. There are always potential for new performance measures to be asked of us to review and to consider. At this point, we don't have any additional, but there's a chance we will have to deal with greenhouse gas emissions, but that is still a work in progress. It has to be a 20-year plan. We actually go out 30 years. It helps us because some of our projects are so large that it potentially takes that long to actually come to fruition, and for highway and bridge, it is fiscally constrained. So the dollars that we are anticipated to receive, we have to document that in the plan. We can have aspirational projects, but more than likely, they are those long-term projects that may take 30 years to complete. So in terms of the basics, the next slide, please. We have to look at what our existing conditions are. So we look at census data. We try to update our GIS layers to make sure that the latest bridge condition is updated, the pavement condition is updated, and reflecting the most recent performance. And then we have, we look at crash data. So crash data is always a little tricky because it's five-year increments. So right now, we are looking from 2018 to 2022 because that is the timing of all the other data that we are placing into the Long Range Transportation Plan. We know that the 2023 crash data is available, and we will use it to the extent that we need to, but it doesn't quite match the other data sets, so that's why we stick with that timeframe. We look for stakeholder input. So this is an example of stakeholder input. We plan to go out to all 35 municipalities and meet. There are three of us that are doing that, and we are going to try to have that all completed by January, and that gives you time to think about perhaps inputs, feedback, those types of things, because our deadline is going to be March 14th of 2025. We also have an equity component. PennDOT calculates an equity analysis for us because we don't have staff bandwidth to do that, so we rely on that information in terms of reviewing what the potential impacts are, low-income and minority populations with very large projects. Many of the smaller projects like bridge replacements have a very small footprint and don't have a negative impact. And then, of course, looking at other issues that we haven't anticipated, having an implementation plan. Like I said, sometimes projects run over. We have to think ahead about, okay, we know bridges are typically beyond what the original estimate is, so we have to have a little bit of wiggle room in there. And then looking at having a public comment period at the end of when we have all of this information put together. And then finally, we have to adopt this in 2025, September of 2025. Otherwise, we actually get in big trouble and it potentially impacts our funding. Next slide, please. So a couple of the reasons for engagement is it's required. We can't just do this by ourselves. It meets the federal planning factors. It helps us identify new issues and needs, and it also helps PennDOT. Believe it or not, when we get feedback, they see it, and it helps develop a potential project list that isn't necessarily a long-range plan project, but could be a short-term project. So that's why it's always good for us to go out and meet with our stakeholders. And then we are looking at all modes. It really depends to a certain extent what projects are in the queue, which mode gets maybe more attention than others, but we also have But we also have to consider other emerging issues such as ATVs being permitted by local ordinance on local roads. That's an emerging item. We're not quite sure where that's going to take us, as well as the growing Amish population. And one of the priorities of our MPO is safety. We have a safety subcommittee. And we also monitor the condition and congestion of roads. There's a funding source called the Carbon Reduction Program, which we are trying to use as best we can when the dollars are made available to us so we can reduce congestion in Center County. So as part of that, my predecessors had come out a number of years ago. We had done an interim visit, and we had asked a lot of questions. And we realized with the last Long Range Plan update done in 2020, that it was just too much. We were spending several hours with staff, elected officials, and we had so much information, much of it was outside the purview of what an MPO could actually do. So we have narrowed it down. We're taking a different approach. And next slide, please, is our five questions. And we tried to keep them somewhat open-ended, but also applicable to what the Long Range Transportation Plan can cover. And this is where, you know, maybe you as supervisors want to consider working on answering these questions when time permits. I really didn't expect you to do that tonight. And it can be anything that you feel as your municipality is a need. Because what we're doing here is asking all municipalities these same questions. And if there's a pattern, if there's a theme, if there's a need, then potentially, we can look at a project that bundles, say for, for example, deteriorating bridges. And we can look for a funding source to address that need in multiple municipalities. It's not necessarily something that would happen immediately, so there's a timing issue, but it's something that we would like to consider. As you know, Center County has done that with some success, and we want to build on that success. The other part of that is when you are answering these questions is if something is emerging as a potential project. We have a project intake form that also has the same due date of March 14th, 2025. That to the extent that you can fill out that form, be as specific as possible, we'd also like to receive that to see where it fits in our programming. It could be a tip project if it's a smaller project, but it could also be a long-term project. One example that's definitely a long-term project is, you may have heard, the Airport Connector Road. So that's been hanging out there for quite some time, but it's a massive project. And a lot of work has, additional work has to be done for it to even get to the point of design. So that is all I had. Next slide has our contact information. And if you had any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or I can come back another time when you're ready to tackle those questions.
All right, we'll take questions. Mr. Heller is recognized.
First off, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. This helps add some clarity. And also, I appreciate the five questions. They're nice, they're high-level, keeps us out of the minutia that maybe we don't need to get into. So I truly appreciate that. And I know I'd welcome an opportunity to maybe weigh in at this at a future date to have some discussion around it. I am just curious about how CCMPO is compensating for the downturn or maybe lack of, luckily, crashes during the COVID times. If you're looking at data from 2018 to 2022, how are those years kind of discounted? I just wanted to understand that a little bit more.
Yeah, so there's, that's a tough one to answer. So there's been different approaches. Historically, we look at five-year increments regardless of what the conditions of the earth are, if you will. All right? And we recognize that that did alter the crash rates. However, the MPO staff with the Safety Subcommittee has really strived since 2021 to use the safety dollars that have been made available to improve the road conditions for Center County. And what we've done is we've partnered with local folks like your staff, Ron Seibert, as well as Federal Highway and PennDOT to have discussions about how we can best use those funds. Because there's all different types of crashes out there. And for example, the priority right now is lane departures. And they tend to be very rural incidences and can be very complicated because of the rural nature of those roads. But we also know that there are other types of crashes, like vulnerable road users, which is another priority, basically pedestrians, that PennDOT wants us to pursue. So to the extent that we can kind of divide our resources, if you will, we are going to try to address both of those. We recently received a grant from the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law for Safe Streets and Roads for All, for those, basically those two priorities for the county.
Great. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
Mr. Patterson is recognized.
I'm good, thank you so much.
Looking forward to discussing this later. Thank you.
I think that does, you know, I think that's all we had, and I thank you for your presentation. It does appear we'll have opportunity at a later time to get further into this, and I look forward to that, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
And going from CCMPO, we go to CAG and Regional Committee Reports, starting with the CAG Committee Reports. Let's see, Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority, but I don't believe that would have been on there.
Yeah, that would have been Corey.
So, yeah, just a duplicate entry there. CCMPO Coordinating Committee, and for that, we'll recognize Ms. Strickland.
Yeah, we had a lot of updates on some different matters that are, you can find in the agenda. The one thing I did want to highlight was that we took action on adopting the Active Transportation Plan. There are a number of links and resources on CCMPO website about that. And I assume that all the, now that the draft has been adopted, all the final plans and data sources, et cetera, will be loaded on there. So once that's all updated, I'll just ask for a link to be added into a future agenda so you can all access that easily. And that was it.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Strickland. I did follow that, that meeting. I was glad to hear there, it was mentioned about the rail, the rail plan, the regional rail plan, that is, and that there was some interest coming to our MPO from Blair County. So that was very encouraging. And just a plug in that, I don't know if this was mentioned in your meeting, but there is a virtual public meeting happening on Tuesday, December 10th, from 4:00 to 5:30 on the State Rail Plan Update. And there are more details on that from advancingparail.com. So definitely encourage the public to find time to join in on that discussion because I, I and others here in this room have heard a lot of interest from our constituents on passenger rail within the area. So that is a good way to get involved and make your voices heard in Harrisburg and beyond, so. Not further, we'll go on to the Parks and Recreation Governance Committee. Ms. Stevens is recognized.
Thank you. So we discussed the work of the committee, and we basically had two votes in that committee. One was that we will continue on with our governance work and then sort of the status quo, if you will. And then the, the second motion that was made in there was one that sort of surprised me, and that was one that to basically, the Parks Capital Committee, the one that we are sort of advocating for repurposing, the, the motion was made to basically kill that committee and, and just have anything that had to do with parks go right to either facilities or finance. Unfortunately, that, that motion failed in our little committee to be forwarded to the general forum. So we will again just continue on and will continue to fight for just another layer of elected officials involved in, in parks and being a voice to, for, in terms of like what we can and can't afford or that sort of thing. So anyway, that was, that was it. Basically, the big takeaway is we're going to continue on and try and tackle some more governance issues. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Patterson is recognized.
When you said we're continuing, the committee is continuing status quo, is that no changes to kind of the roles and responsibilities and?
As, as of right now, right? To, to be fair, we met the Wednesday morning before Thanksgiving. And I think that it was sort of a difficult time. And anyway, so we will further, continue into next year to discuss the responsibility, how we transform the Parks, what had been the existing Parks Capital Committee, and what sort of, in terms of MOUs and stuff, need to happen to repurpose that committee and coming up with a mission and purpose for that committee. So whatever the new committee will be. And there was some discussion too, even of, the overall gist was how to best help the authority in their mission. And then there was some discussion about, has the authority actually, is there still a need for a Parks Authority? That sort of got thrown out there as a discussion point. We, we didn't take it up, but, you know, in the sense that is, is the Parks Authority still something that we want to continue on with? Or, again, the topic of a foundation came up again. So just little nuances we have to work through.
I appreciate the committee starting to maybe think outside the current box. I think, you know, we're just got to, we're obligate, seems like there's some, and it predates me certainly, but there's some obligating of township without the township being represented in the way that obligation happens. So having that committee be a little bit involved, a little bit more, I think would be good. And that sounds like you're working toward it.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
I did have one other question just on the, there was, I did see something in the agenda about, there was a small change order in there for stormwater. Did you guys approve that one? They had a change order for the engineering company to do a, that motion. I'm sorry, that's a different authority.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like one.
Okay, sorry, never mind, thank you.
Okay.
But yeah, if you do have a question on that, you can go through the manager, we can see about getting an answer on that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for Patty?
Thank you.
I didn't, didn't forget about you, Lisa, but if you do have anything, feel free to chime in as well. Yeah, I was going to say, if that's all, thank, thank you, Ms. Stevens, for that report. I see the, the conversation of the, of the various committees is still alive and well. I know even the one meeting that I attended, there was a lot of questions about all the CAG committees that there are already that elected officials have to report to, and if there is ever opportunities to like consolidate or reduce that while keeping within all the scope of work and on, stay on par with everything, that, that sounds like it would be welcomed in amongst everyone's busy schedules. Also, still supportive of the Parks Foundation, considering that we are one of the highest payers of park services at some point, if not already exceeding three-quarters of a million dollars a year. To be able to find other mechanisms for parks to have revenue and continue to be sustainable and bring in a little less pressure off municipalities would be well-welcome as well. So definitely encouraged to keep pursuing that. So thank you very much. Facilities Committee was canceled, and there are no other committee reports. So we'll move on to staff reports, and the manager is recognized for their report.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So I provided directly to the board my report. I'll provide a few updates here. I'm happy to share that the township closed, or the township participated with the contribution as indicated and previously approved by the board in the 2024 operating budget in the, the agricultural easement program that we have with the county. So the Carl Gates Farm closing took place today, and the township provided the partial payment. So we're happy to see another property within the township as part of the farmland preservation program rolled into the program. So thank you to the board for your continued support for that program as we are able to continue to preserve our royal, beautiful landscape here in the township. Also happy to share with the board that continuation, the continued negotiations with the local municipality agencies for the extension of the Penn State Impact Fee and Lou continue and are in progress, as well as many others that are already provided to the Board of Supervisors. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any board members have any questions?
Just generally speaking with the fee and lou conversation with Penn State timeline on that, what can we expect next?
It's a great question. So the current contract expires December 31st of 2024. And so we continue to advance our discussions for an extension of the existing contract and/or a amendment to put forth a new agreement based on the negotiations that are taking place.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No further questions because of the negotiate, ongoing negotiations.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, thank you, Madam Manager, for that report. We'll move on to unfinished business. And first, we have a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, to adjust the real estate tax. The manager is recognized.
Thank you, Vice Chair Supervisor Thompson. Provided with the agenda is a narrative summarizing the, a little bit about the process as to how we got here, but notably that this adjustment as part of the board's motion to approve directing the manager to update the policy documents, which included the draft 2025 operating budget, as well as this resolution that is in front of you this evening. This evening, the board is asked to take action on this resolution to formally adopt by way of opening up the public hearing to allow for public input. Once the public hearing is closed, deliberate, and then formally adopt the adjustment to the tax increase.
All right, so this is a public hearing, so the public, at this time, I will open up the public hearing for members of the public. We'll start in the room. Anyone wants to address the board can walk forward to the podium and state your name and neighborhood of residence. Not seeing any, I will move to online. Feel free to use the raised hand feature located at the bottom of your screen, or you may unmute and wait to be recognized by the chair. All right, seeing no public input, this was a public hearing, and the public hearing is now closed. We will go to board discussion, and we'll start with a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that to adopt the resolution increasing real estate mileage by .75 mils for fiscal '25, beginning January 1, 2025.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Ms. Stevens. Any board discussion?
I have made my comments previously, so no, I have no discussion from you.
Okay.
I mean, I'll just summarize that we, we have a bit of work to do. We've got a lot of work to do, quite frankly. I think we took the first step by making cuts in the budget as it was presented. There's some holes, there's a hole there that we dug. There's some holes, there's a hole there that we dug still. We, you know, got rid of some revenue that probably wasn't equitably received. This is one step in kind of receiving revenue equitably. And we're gonna work together in '25 to further kind of get efficient as a team, as a, as a board. So this is a, this is a leadership step. It's not something that anybody probably wants to do or, but it's, it's something that we have to do. And there's a lot of other municipalities in the same boat.
Yeah.
Over.
Any other discussion? I was gonna say, I appreciate the, the board. We, like, like Mr. Patterson said, we had thoroughly looked at ways to make up the budget shortfall through cuts. We, we have completely exhausted that. And I think we've gone at least 10 or more years without any tax increase, but the reality of the situation is expenses go up and to continue providing our residents with the services that they like and rely upon, the revenue has not kept up with that pace. And I believe somewhere during our discussions, Mr. Patterson and I determined, I think the current proposed tax increase would be enough to fully fund our police department. So just an example of where this added revenue could really make a difference in continuing to provide the services that our residents highly praise the township on. So with nothing further, I will send this over to the manager, since this is going to be a resolution.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thompson. This is a resolution. Therefore, it's a roll call for Resolution 2024-23. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
No.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes with majority consensus, four to one.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Next up, we have a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Senator County, Pennsylvania to adjust the real estate transfer tax. The manager is recognized.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is a more detailed summary of the narrative that discusses the process, but also specifically identifies the tax increase at a current rate of 1.25 to 1.37 for the real estate transfer tax as directed by the Board of Supervisors at the previous meeting. The 2025 annual operating budget draft has been presented and advertised with this adjustment as well as the resolution that's provided with the agenda. Therefore, we have a public hearing to open and then board deliberation for this action to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Just like the previous agenda item, this will be a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing to members of the public in the room that will want to address the board. Not seeing anyone online. Okay, seeing no public input, this will close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion on this item.
This is Omari. I move to adopt the resolution increasing real estate transfer tax to 1.37% beginning January 1, 2025.
This is Patty, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Ms. Stevens. Any board discussion?
Excuse me.
I, I'll just refer to Mr. Patterson's summary before, sort of along the same lines there.
Yeah. All right. There are, if there is no further board discussion, I will hand it over to the manager to call the roll.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote for Resolution 2024-24. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson? Mr. Heller?
No.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes with majority consensus, four to one.
Great, thank you. I lo-, I located the missing page. I, I almost thought we were done here. I'm looking here, I'm like, what's going on? I thought there was more to the agenda. So next up, a public hearing on a resolution of Township of Ferguson, Senator County, Pennsylvania, adopting the operating budget for the fiscal year 2025, beginning on January 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2025. And I will recognize the manager.
Thank you. So the Board of Supervisors received the proposed 2025 annual operating budget and conducted two public special meetings to review the document on October 24th and October 29th amendments to the budget that were approved with board consensus and have been incorporated into the document that is available and recognized as the draft 2025 annual operating budget. Provided within the agenda is a copy and a direct link of the 2025 annual operating budget draft, and it has also been made available at the Township Building in print copy for inspection and accessible by clicking at the Ferguson Township Draft 2025 Annual Operating Budget link as presented in the agenda narrative for residents or others interested in reviewing the budget prior to this public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Manager. This is another public hearing, so we will open up the public hearing to any members in the room that want to address the board. Seeing none, we'll move to online. Anyone online that want to address the board? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed and I will entertain a motion on this item.
This is Matt, and I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the 2025 operating budget.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second.
All right, had a motion by Mr. Heller, seconded by Ms. Stevens. Any board discussion? Yes, Mr. Heller is recognized.
And I just want to say, I appreciate all of us taking the time that we did to not only go through the CIP unrelated, but then, of course, the budget in great detail as we did over the nights that we spent doing that. I think to Mr. Patterson's point, right, and things we've heard about sharpening the pencil, looking at things again, maybe in the future, what I really wanted to bring up tonight was maybe an idea, something that we just did in COG and on the Finance Committee, was we took time, and being a project manager, I always appreciate this. After something closes, you do a retrospective. How did it all work out? How did the process work? How, you know, what might we like to see in the future? What are some changes? What are the things that were done really well? For example, we do this even in Boy Scouts, thorns and roses, right? What are the thorns? What are the roses? And what I'm hoping to do is maybe start a conversation, not for tonight, but plant the seed that potentially in January, we spend one of our, some time during one of our normal meetings to just do that retrospective. Look at the timeline, look at things that worked, look at maybe questions we might have around the, the budget as, so that we can maybe improve upon things in the next cycle. Because we anticipate that the tax increases, et cetera, will be coming around again, right? This is a first step. So what can we do to improve the process, the time to review, et cetera? And I've got some things already, you know, kind of lined up to, to talk about. And I hope that if this is something that the board and staff would be interested in, that we can then individually take it upon ourselves to go back and say, okay, what are the things we'd like to see? Where, you know, where were we successful and where do we want to improve? So I just wanted to put that out there for a, a discussion item as we plan, again, getting right back into the budget cycle here within another nine months and even before that. So. That was it.
All right. Appreciate your remarks. Always good to take a review at what we're doing, see if there are ways to improve and just, you know, yeah. Any other board discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Heller's right. I mean, Mr. Patterson's recognized.
So I, I have, I have four statements. The first one's to our residents. You come first. If there are, are good ideas, please send them to our manager for kind of shaping and implementation. You can reach out to me if you want, but I, we really need, this is a community, we need the community involved.
Yeah.
As we move forward. To our staff, you are the engine of this township. I look forward to seeing your innovations and your ideas in motion in 2025. To our manager, I look forward to your leadership and all the goodness that will kind of, you bubble up to the board, that we can celebrate the good works. I know we, we see but a, a small piece of all of the work that the staff does, but it's mighty. And I appreciate it every single month when I'm able, when I'm talking to people and telling them about all the things happening at Ferguson Township. And then to you, my team, the team, the board team, we have a lot of work to do. And it cannot wait until September of 2025. It starts next month. To your point about the first step is maybe a retrospective and just kind of constantly reevaluating those $18,000 decisions every month that we make. A hundred of those equals $1.8 million.
Yeah.
And we've made a lot of them this year. So that's all I have. We've got a lot of work to do just as a team, the community, staff, our leadership and our board. It's gonna be great.
Patty or Lisa?
Nothing to add.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, thank you, everyone, for their, all, all your hard work. And those of us, those of you who stood by us until 1:00 in the morning, took a little bit of a flashback of past Board of Supervisors meetings, but we carried on. And, you know, appreciate the work of our staff, see what you do day in, day out. And, and the manager, you're, you've, you've done a good job delivering good news of grants that we've gotten over the years. So, you know, I think even looking back on this past year, you know, we had, we had a lot of wins to celebrate and always welcome those. If there's no further board discussion, we'll have the manager call the roll.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote for Resolution 2024-25. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Next, a public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson, Senator County, Pennsylvania amending Chapter 19 Signs and Billboards, Section 107, exempt signs, Section 108, temporary signs, Section 109, permanent sign types by use, Section 111, commercial uses, Section 113, permits. And with that, the community planners recognized, or the, the, the planning and zoning administrators recognized.
We, we switched on you. The requested changes have been made to the attachments. The ordinance is back before the board for approval.
Thank you. This too is a public hearing, so I will call on anyone in the room that wants to address this to the board. Seeing none, anyone online? All right. Well, with no public comment, the public hearing is now closed and I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mrs. Patty, I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 19, Section 107.
This is Matt, I'll second.
All right, we got a motion by Ms. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Heller. Any discussion? I have nothing further. We have extensively, I believe, discussed this. The Planning Commission has also discussed this on numerous occasions and I appreciate their work and service to our community. And if there is no other discussion, I will have the manager take a short pause. Mr. Patterson is recognized.
I just wanted to say that this is an example of a good idea that was brought forth, and I don't know who did it, but thank you. And the idea is that the fee associated with this license is not worth it. It's taking staff time, that they can do other, other things that add value. And so this is a good idea, part of that innovations and ideas that I just spoke, requested for 2025. Keep it up. Over.
We had a big check mark in the room. All right. No further discussion, the manager called the roll.
Thank you. This is an ordinance, uh, number 1105. A roll call vote for ordinance 1105. Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance amendment passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. Item five, a public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson, Senator County, Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 15 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Part II, Section 205, Traffic Signals at Certain Locations, Section 209, Turning at Certain Intersections Prohibited or Restricted, Section 214, Stop Intersections Established, and Section 217, School Zones Established. And with that, the Township Engineer is recognized.
Thanks, sir. This was before the board last month for discussion and authorization of the public hearing. I wasn't here, so I'll just take a brief moment and walk through the ordinance amendments. There are four basic sections. The first section, one, deals with traffic signals, so we're close to completing the construction of the signal on Science Park Road at Sandy Drive. This will authorize that for enforcement. In the process of preparing the ordinance, we noticed there were some other locations that have been constructed but not yet ordained, so they are added in. Those are at Science Park Pine Hall, Pine Grove Road, College Avenue, Shingle Town Road, and then also Blue Course Drive in Bristol. The next section is turn prohibitions, so in conjunction with a traffic signal being constructed at Sandy Drive North, which is near the SNA Homes Model Building, at Sandy Drive South, during certain times of the day, we will prohibit left turns. So that is at Science Park and Sandy Drive South, Monday through Friday from 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning and 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. The third part, third section is for stop intersections. This is to remove the stop signs that would be at the intersection of Science Park and Sandy where the traffic signal would be installed. Pretty basic. And then the last section, Section 4, deals with school zones. So we're establishing a new school zone on Cherry Lane for the Radio Park Elementary School. So you see that included there in the ad. You also see in the remove and add the school zone that currently exists in Pine Grove Mills for Ferguson Elementary, and that is merely to adjust the time of days for arrival and departure of students. The school district changed those a few years back. They've been operating in accordance with the district's arrival and departure times. It's just our ordinance has not been in sync. So adoption of this ordinance will accomplish all of those tasks. I would just note one thing in the proposed recommendation for the board, for the adoption of the ordinance, it's not just for Section 205, it's, it's part two, but there are four sections. It's, it's 205, it's 209, it's 214, and 217. All those parts that are listed in the header of the ordinance.
All right, that is, that is noted. Thank you, Mr. Cybert. Any, well, I guess before board discussion, we do have to open up this up for a public hearing. I appreciate everyone's patience with my redundancy here. We have not been short of public hearings tonight, so anyone in the room want to address the board, they may come, and we're, we're all laughing now. They may come up to the podium. Anyone online want to address the board? All right, I'm seeing none, so I'll entertain a motion from the board.
This is Matt. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance amendment to Chapter 15 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Part II, Section Vehicles and Traffic, Part Two, Sections 205, where'd it go, 209, 214, and 217.
Do we have a second?
Amari, I'll second.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Heller, seconded by Mr. Patterson. Any further board discussion or questions for the engineer?
Probably, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Patterson is recognized.
I was actually curious, you, you struck a nerve when you said we've modified it based on kind of the schools' hours. And I was curious if we can do something where it's just, it's not the hours, it's, you know, referencing the schools so that we don't need to come back and amend this ever again. Whatever the school hours are, that's, you know, it's kind of the reference to it, and you guys could make the changes as, as appropriate. But I, just curious on that.
I have some question. Amari, I honestly don't know if that could be done and enforceable or not. Something we can look into for next time if we have to make that change to leave it more open-ended. That would be something I'd have to work with the solicitor on to see if that would still be enforceable or not.
I would say it carries more weight when it goes in front of the judge, right? So if it's ever appealed or challenged, if the citation that's issued, that is something that some folks can properly, you know, bring with, perhaps with the guidance of their attorney, that the ordinance, remember, this is the law, this is what carries the weight. And so if it's not specific to identify what the actual speed limit is, it could be a loophole. And then it just kind of, you know, as the manager, I think about all the work that gets put in, right? And then that enforcement citation takes place, it goes all the way up to the judge, and that type of a loophole just wouldn't be worth it. It's easier to just update the legislation and ensure that it's sealed tight, that we've done the work that we need to, to ensure that our officers are out there issuing citations that have a sealed tight law that is enforceable. Certainly something that can be discussed with the solicitor, but I would, I, I would recommend that we continue to do what we've done.
Or just make it 15 miles an hour, 24/7.
Can't support that.
Sorry, school, gotta turn.
No, I was thinking the same thing, make it 15, except when we're out of school, and then it's fully enforceable. Anyway, I thank you for the next time. Just a thought. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and, and speaking on that matter, if I'm correct, if it's incorrected the ordinance, then usually the judge does not rule in the favor of the township. And it, it does give me a compliment to township staff. I have noticed a lot of, it seems like you have had a lot of diligence in this past year of making small updates to some of these ordinances, and definitely appreciate that diligence and hard work that goes into that, so.
Yeah, there are officers, and, and I know particularly sergeants, that will actually direct to have, if they're going to court on an appeal, they'll take the ordinance to ensure that that, you know, whatever that law is, that's, that's actually enforcing the citation, they'll take that with them, should there be questions from the judge. So that type of diligence is really appreciated, and we appreciate the work that our Township Engineer does. So we just bring it to you for that formal policy adoption.
Any further board discussions? Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Seibert. With no further discussion, the manager will call the roll.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote for ordinance, ordinance number 1106. Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ordinance 1106 passes unanimously. Thank you.
Sounds good. And item six, approval of, of written decision of a conditional use application for a studio for instruction of music performing arts, a mixed martial arts studio on a property located at 1445 West College Avenue. And manager is recognized.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is a narrative summarizing the history and, and what brings us to present time. The board previously approved the agreement. There is one amendment that after Penn State General Counsel reviewed and after discussion, and, and involving our township solicitor as well, we were agreeable to their proposed light amended amendment. As you can see in the attachment, this evening for it, for this conditional use permit to formally be issued, we're bringing the agreement back to the board for formal adoption. Happy to answer any questions. This evening, the board is asked to take motion to approve the amended conditional use agreement as attached within the agenda.
All right. Any members of the board wanna make the motion?
This is Amari, I move to approve the amended conditional use agreement.
This is Matt, I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Heller. Any board discussion? Seeing none, so I don't believe we need a roll call for this one, so I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. That will then bring us to new business, starting with the consent agenda. Any members of the board wanna pull items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mrs. Patty, so moved.
Do we have a second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Heller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two, review of Ferguson Township Schedule of Fees for 2025, and the manager is recognized.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is, is a narrative summarizing a very routine item that we do every year. We will update the schedule of fees and receive recommendations from our department heads, as well as our contracted member, our contracted agencies that we use. For example, the State College Borough Health Department, if there are rates that are being increased, we talk through them. So what you see within the agenda packet is a redlined schedule of fee, proposed 2025 schedule of fees, and a memo from our Assistant Township Manager to me detailing some of these changes, particularly as it relates to the workforce housing ordinance fee in lieu. This evening, the board is asked to have reviewed, and then of course, any, any concerns, questions, request for amendments would be discussed and deliberated this evening for a final schedule of fees presented at the next meeting for adoption.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Any members of the... Trying to think how I wanna do this.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking we should maybe entertain some questions since this is a draft, 'cause I'm not sure if taking a motion right now on what, what is presented would be helpful. So any questions or...
I'll start. I just had a question on the one fee, and it was about, I think, use of this room, the fee for that. It, does that, like, so when people use this room, does that then include, like, access to the bathrooms and things like that that need to be cleaned up afterward?
That is correct.
And, and this is just, that fee that's in there sort of covers the cost of keeping the lights on and cleaning the bathrooms and...
Administrative, yeah.
Yes? Okay. All right.
As well as, and I will share with you, so if there is a need to bring in staff to meet and, you know, unlock the facility, it will assist with that as well. So any overhead that comes as a result of having folks in our meeting room, when we would particularly not be open, but even if we're open, it's recognizing that there's a reallocation of resources, and oftentimes we have to fill that void as well, so.
How often? How many times a year? Just a ballpark.
It's a great question, and we certainly can bring that back to the next meeting. I would say on average, I think I've seen maybe one to two approved a month, but we could go a month without having any request for this meeting room. But I would say on average, I see one to two.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Heller is recognized.
My only question, and I'm wondering, it's related to the food trucks, the takeout establishments, which covers, of course, food trucks. I'm wondering if we might consider maybe breaking those apart and not charging food trucks a fee? Just a thought. I, I know the food trucks get hit by all different municipalities with a lot of different fees and other things, even the county. Well, I, I'm sorry, let me not say that. And I'm wondering what we might be able to do to make it easier for the food trucks. They show up to our events, they show up for Ferguson Township, you know, events, they show up to the farmer's market, they're, they're doing what I think is a, is a good service for the community when they're out and about. So I'm wondering what we might be able to do to make their lives a little bit easier. And I guess my proposal would be to separate out, take out establishments, keep that at 250 annually, and then break out the food trucks and have that set to zero.
So I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're referring to the health department rates that are being presented here as part of page eight and nine? So again, this is a service that we actually contract through the borough because they have an established health depart, well, I don't, they don't have a technical, technically, I don't think it's now labeled a health department, but they have a, like a department of, what is that department called? They have a health officer who is trained to conduct the inspections in accordance to the state legislations. Great idea. However, we really don't have that ability, and we receive quite the discount by being able to leverage services kind of through this MOU and not have the overhead of, of a staff person, for example.
Thank you for clarifying. I apologize, but let me re-ask the question. Where do we find the fees associated with a food truck, then? Are they in here? I'm just curious to know how much they're paying.
Which, associated with food trucks?
Yeah, just in general, to operate in the township.
On page 12, the second, the last item on the first table is a food truck permit that be set at zero.
Yes, correct.
Disregard!
This was an item previously brought by a board member, I believe, Mal, I don't wanna call out, but, and, and it was requested that this be set to zero. There was, I believe, a 25 or maybe a $50 submission for the administration of that paperwork, and so the board had suggested that we set that to zero last year. And so that was set to zero, and it currently remains at zero.
Not the first time, or the last time, I will be behind the curve. So, thank you.
Good, good question on the, the, the health, the health permit fee. It does, does look like it is relatively expensive.
Yeah.
But also understanding, I don't know how that department, State College Borough, is working, but if it's self-sustaining through those fees, it is a little bit harder to ask a department to waive, waive a fee.
Let me ask this, then. Do they, do food trucks get hit up, then, that, a fee by every municipality to cover the health?
So there are requirements that a food truck still has to meet in terms of state legislation for, like, surf safe classes. And so those fees, they do cover everything ranging from the classes that the food trucks have to take to, you know, in terms of, like, surf safe, so they're still held to the same accountability that we would want them in terms of making sure that the food is being, you know, maintained and cooked in accordance to, I keep saying state legislation, because there's an actual name that I, that is not coming to my thoughts. But, but there is a, a, a health department at the state level that requires that food establishments, as well as, you know, any other food establishment that's in brick and mortar, that they are, you know, it looks a little different, but there's still these requirements that they have to make. And the health officer at the State College Borough facilitates those classes, conducts those inspections, and then maintains all the administrative paperwork for issuance of those permits and, and maintaining those annual renewals.
I appreciate your line of questioning there, and I, I agree with it. I, because I, I seem to recall, and I'm, I'm not gonna get this right either, I would have to do more research on it, but I think there was actually even another fee that they had to pay if they were in any of our parks, that the authority had asked for another fee to be parked in any of our parks. I'm not sure where they, where that ended up, but, yeah, it, it almost seems like regionally, maybe we could do some advocating for a more regional permit.
I like that, more regional, maybe this is something then for COG or a different conversation, because I, I just know people look forward to driving by and saying, oh, look who stopped there.
Rosie's Barogies.
Exactly. Yeah. So, okay, I think you're right, a more regional conversation would probably appropriate.
Definitely a good one for, to put a, put a pin in, because food, food trucks, they're, they're all, they, they can be all over the place. If somebody wanted to, they could take their food truck all across the state of Pennsylvania, but every stop may entail a fee or a permit or other item that may be a barrier or a burden for them to be able to establish their presence in certain parts of the state or within the county, so.
Those are my only comments, so just food trucks.
Any other discussions before we get hungry on this item?
My, I guess my overall comment on this was that these fees, a backup, we have a budget that includes some kind of amount of money we expect to receive in fees. We have a fairly sizable hole in the budget, even with all the things that we've done thus far. And so I wonder if there are places where there are some services, some fees in here, like we got rid of the sign fee, which was taking more staff time than it was actually the dollars bringing in. But nonetheless, it was dollars coming in. And so I guess I'm wondering, what are those, what is the, have we evaluated all of these fees to know if they are all worth the paper they're written on? Like, are they, are we spending the appropriate amount of time for each of these fees? Are we spending more time on some of these fees, and therefore there should be more of fee? Because we've got, you know, somebody spending half their day on something that's bringing $5 for each one, right? And that's, that's not okay. So I, I just want maybe to just have that kind of an answer writ large for each and every fee, just the same way we went through line by line with the budget. I think we should have, like, a line by line with each of these fees and kind of that justification of, if this is the right number, or does it make sense to even have it? So I pause there.
So I would say we do prepare this with a great deal of evaluation of what we might need to adjust. It goes in front of the board, recognizing that there are some things that, of course, board members may wanna bring up and further discuss that maybe we have not further evaluated in the same way that the board might with that perspective. But yes, staff does take time to do a review. So for example, like the workforce housing fee in lieu, that fee is generated as a result of, like, materials for, you know, construction costs. And so there are some changes that get made based on the existing formula that informs on some of what we have presented. And then there are other items that I would say, could we do a more thorough analysis on, for example, the meeting room fee? Possibly. In terms of how many times are we issuing this room reservation on a Saturday or Sunday where perhaps someone is coming in and we have to pay overtime? We try to make sure that that's minimal, but we also recognize that it provides a great deal of support to an HOA, for example, or a nonprofit like Center United Way or Center Safe if they wanna conduct larger gatherings or larger presentations. And so we try to take into consideration the requests that we might be receiving and understanding, you know, based on what they might pay, because the payment is also based, for example, for the meeting room reservation, if you're a nonprofit or a for-profit. And so in terms of, could we do a different type of an analysis? Of course, we could, and really kind of assess for dollars for dollars. I think this is an example that traditionally we haven't been set up to identify what that cost benefit analysis is. I think it's something that we could do moving forward. We certainly have the staff with the expertise and the mindfulness that these types of analysis and assessments can happen to better inform, should we be, should we be approving meeting room reservations on Saturdays and Sundays? Is the cost, and this is something I can speak intelligently on as an example, because this is a conversation I just had two days ago, in assessing, how often are we approving for weekend reservation? And then how often is that requiring somebody to have to come in? And for what length of time? And how often are we paying overtime? And now that we have a union, so a couple of years ago, it didn't, it didn't have as big of an impact, but with unions, as you know, there is a certain amount that you have to pay for overtime based on. So there are these operational matters that really do kind of inform what that assessment looks like, and yes, those are things that are happening at an, at a staff level that I'm, as time... staff level that I'm, as time, as we move into, I think I can't be the new manager anymore, unfortunately, right? I've been here two and a half years. But, but as I continue to settle in, these are observations that I certainly see are warranted for further assessment. Some are currently in progress, some are on the table. So, so could I go through each item here and help identify what's been under assessment in the last year? Sure, I could. Happy to sit down and do that with you. But if we wanted to have a more intentional conversation for next year, happy to do that as well. At this point in time, what's presented is recommended, but the board certainly is in a great position this evening to make some suggestions as to what you would want to amend. So when it comes back in front of you for adoption, we can have that enacted for the 2025 fiscal year.
I see this as part of the work we need to do.
Right. Yes, I...
If I may, I think maybe in our retrospective, with the budget, we added and we bring, built into our timeline, a discussion around this to take a deeper look at everything and also understand kind of where these fees go and how they move around the township behind the scenes. So I think that might be part of our discussion as well, at least where I would be. I'd be looking for more clarity.
You can find in our revenue section of our budget, oftentimes, you can see what the total amount of collection is for any given fiscal year. And I would say that there are, there are quite a, there are a lot of schedule of fee line items there are than maybe the number of collection, right? We just, to ensure that we're administering fees in an equitable way, this schedule of fees is a reference point for all staff, for all the work that's being done. We do not generally collect, and I will say generally, but because we could have, we'd have to generate a report. But I would say that these fees do not have any significant impact on our budget.
Unless we multiply them by 10.
Unless we multiply them by 10, correct.
There...
With the exception of, for example, workforce housing fee in lieu, right? Like, I think we saw for the first time this year what an estimate might look like coming in. And so we will have more data on that for further assessment to see what that might actually look like.
On page eight, under Finance Department Standard Fees, I, if I recall correctly, it was either during the budget or CIP. Didn't a board member mention about one of those fees?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Thompson, which one?
Page 502 of 513, page eight. Is that it?
Page eight, under Finance Department, it's like on the lower third of the page.
Right, yes. In terms of questioning, when we were reviewing the budget, the administration of the documents for, we have to send letters out to property, to taxpayers who haven't paid. And so there's, in terms of sending out this letter to... We are required by law, I know, I'm trying to recall the legislation, I know our finance director had sent it to me, but we are required by law to administer this letter, and the legislation doesn't require us to charge them. So I think we want to be very mindful about what that might look like in terms of administering a fee. It's here. It does acknowledge, and I'll look to the finance director to see if he'd like to weigh in. It does acknowledge that a certified letter administrative fee, the township could charge the standard fee of $7.50 per letter.
If I'm correct.
The tax bill request, first one is free. It does say that. So the first one that they get is free, but a letter, we have a, an option to administer a fee to send that letter. But a requirement by state law to send the letter without, without reference in that legislation that we are permitted or have the authority to administer that fee. So I'm really, it's probably a good assessment, it's probably the good work to do, to assess, to see what our authority is to administer such fees when we send that letter. But yes, there was a conversation, I do recall Supervisor Thompson.
Okay. And on the certified, that's through the post office, so it sounds like, it's not like we're gaining any gain on that, because I think, and it may even be actually more than $5 now to send something certified through the post office, considering how their fees have been going.
Well, what we do first, and I again, let the finance director correct me if I'm wrong, we send the letter before we send the finance letter, so, or the certified letter. So when we send the letter, there's no fee, yes, please.
They're, they're just sent first class mail, so there's no, there's never a certified letter sent, because they go back to the county and the county, because the collections after the year is done.
But we have the option to do that. So there, there could be occasions where we, for circumstances that may be applicable to any given situation, we might believe it's appropriate to send a certified letter. We know, sometimes people are avoiding, you know, receiving the letter, so we'll send it by certified letter, by certified mail to help track what we're doing. To my, since I've been manager, I haven't had one of those circumstances presented that we've had to do that. But to Todd Grady's point, we send it by first class mail, that first letter that goes out. And then, at the end of the year, excuse me, at the beginning of January, we send what we call a return list to the county, and then they take over, as given in the authority of the tax law, they take over and they try to recoup the, the taxes that weren't paid directly to the township. Mr. Grady, is there anything else you want to add to that?
And the certified tax letter is the tax service that fuzzy companies ask for. Are the taxes paid? They want a certified letter. We do charge those, and they're paid. It's generally $10 because we'd have a municipality and then school taxes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Perfect. Any other board discussion?
When can we modify these fees?
It's in front of the board this evening to make, to have deliberation for board consensus to make changes.
Next step would be a public hearing.
Anytime we want.
With, if the board would like to bring this back for a future discussion, we, our standard procedure here is that we will make changes at the end of the year, and then we will post and advertise what our changes are for the upcoming fiscal year.
So we could change it in January or February, post it for a modification for the year, in theory?
I'll have to confirm that there wouldn't be any issue with making changes throughout mid-year. I, I can't confirm or deny if there would be any concerns. So for example, if we're administering a fee, like legal concerns, like if we're administering a fee, you know, in February to an applicant for an item that's listed in our schedule of fees, and they pay $50, but in the same fiscal year, another applicant's paying $150 if it increases. So just being mindful that when we start the new year, it's, it's a standard procedure, but I will look in to see if it's something that is a legal concern if we were to make changes in the middle of the year for this item. This comes back to the board every year as a draft. And then generally, we will make the, any amendments that are directed by the board, and then send it through legal, and then have it updated formally through a public hearing at the last meeting of the year. But we certainly could look in to see what the options are without any legal implications for changes throughout the year.
Very good. The workforce housing fee in lieu decrease in fee, what was the genesis of the decrease?
So, that's a great question. I think it has to do with, so last year, it went up relatively high, and I think it had to do with construction cost increasing because of the inflation and with inflation going back down. We... The materials, yeah. So inflation informed the materials, right? So, because the formula that exists, it's based on the materials. Materials is a variable in the formula.
And materials for work for multifamily units went down 10%?
Materials in general just went up so high in 2022 and 2023. You may recall, well, I guess maybe not, but our bids that would come back last year were doubled than what we budgeted. And in part, that was service labor, but it was largely because of materials. And not only were they hard to come by, and we had significant delays that we saw, in some cases, double.
It just doesn't make sense, because the work, the single family fee is higher, and so multifamily's down to, we got to reconcile those two things. Just maybe take a look for next week, but unless we just keep the number the same.
No, what's presented, so we consult and collaborate with the Center County Housing Land Trust. You might recall Ms. Skunover comes, and so we collaborate. So this is informed through, sit down, we go through the formula, we calculate, this is the recommendation that we've received. So I can bring a little bit more information, if that would be helpful, to help inform why that, that change happened like it did, just based on the operations. Inflation is what's coming to mind, but we can come with a little bit more detailed analysis as to what changed, what like, what variables impacted and informed the change, 10% change. But it went up. So I would say too, like, if you look back, it went up significantly during COVID, when the inflation increased as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Ready for a motion?
Yep, we can do that.
This is Matt. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the fee schedule and authorize advertisement of a public hearing to adopt the 2025 schedule of fees.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Heller, seconded by Ms. Stevens. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Say no. Motion passes. Next up, communications to the board. Any board members want to address any communications they received to the board? Mr. Heller is recognized.
There are communications related to the budget, as well as tax increase.
Any other communications? Seeing none. Calendar items, it was brought to my attention, next week will be a bulk pickup week, so just a heads up to, heads up to those that have some stuff that they want to get rid of, or if they're looking for like a free Christmas tree, or a holiday tree, or whatever along the curb, that next week sounds like your week.
One of the last ones.
Yeah.
As we know it.
Because, yeah, we'll be going to like an on, like an on-demand service with a little bit more controls to it. And more information about that's on the COG website, if anyone from the public is interested in learning more. The Board of Supervisors will be meeting next week due to the holidays. We're bringing, moving our last meeting up to give our board members and staff some time to finish out the year. And more to come on the Board of Supervisors Special Meeting, which would also be slated for next week. The manager and the chair will decide whether or not we have any items for that. And then the township offices will be closed on December 25th for the holidays. So if there's no other calendar items, I will recognize Ms. Stevens for the very last item on the agenda.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? All right, we're adjourned. Have a good evening, folks.